I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All call please.
Mr. O'Hair.
Yes.
Mr. Espinola.
Yes.
Mr. Bahu.
Here.
Mr. Lemay. Mr. Morin.
Yes.
Mr. Tatsias. Mr. Gigi.
Yes.
Mr. Booten.
Here. Okay, any, uh, Mr. Gigi, can you check to see if there's any public appearances today?
I'll put all that sheet.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman.
Okay, uh, next would be, uh, any school committee communications? Okay. Uh, next we have report of the student representative, Mr. Bladus. Welcome.
So, for organization in clubs, uh, the freshman and sophomore class hosted their second annual community spaghetti dinner on November ninth. It served over two hundred students, families, and staff members. Students from both classes stayed after school to help set up, serve food, and clean up. They're looking forward to hosting the event again next year. The outgoing club will be going on a geocaching trip in the Drakehead State Forest on November seventeenth after school. The GLTHS pep rally is scheduled for Wednesday, November twenty-third, in the gymnasium during periods three, four, ten, and eleven. We are planning on a performance from our cheerleading team and urban dance team. We are als- we will also host our annual student versus staff basketball game. For our student council has planned our GLTHS spirit week for November twenty-first through November twenty-third. The spirit days include Monday, November twenty-first is Pride Day, Tuesday, November twenty-second is Flannel Day, Wednesday, November twenty-third is Griffin Day, and they'll be wearing blue and gold. Skills USA students are planning to attend their Fall State Leadership Conference, November twenty-second, no, twenty, twentieth through the twenty-second, where they will participate in leadership workshops and activities to help members learn skills and tools which they can bring back to their chapter. They're also hosting their annual community service to write letters to our alumni and friends serving away from home this holiday season on November seventeenth after school. On Saturday, November twenty-sixth, Greater Lowell students will volunteer to assist with the City of Lights Parade in Lowell. For the Griffin Athletics, boys soccer battled for a playoff spot until the final game of the season at the tying Saint Mary's of Lynn at home on October twenty-first. They needed at least another draw in the final game of the season against the Saint Mary's squad on the road. The game remained tied at one to one until the final minute of play when the Spartans ultimately secure the two to one win. Still a great season for the team, and with much success at the sub-varsity level, the future looks bright. For girls soccer, they finished well with wins over Greater Lawrence Tech and Lawrence High School, as well as a hard-fought two-two tie with league rival Shoshine. The Lady Griffins look to continue their strong play next season. Girls volleyball narrowly missed a MIAA tourney berth, finishing with a final record of nine and eleven. The team will have many returning players next season and will look to be in tournament contention for years to come. Both the boys and the girls, cross country teams, have had highly successful seasons with both teams placing top finishers at the CAC League meet on October twenty-ninth at Essex Tech. The team also competed at the state vocational meet on November twenty-second in Rantham, with the girls team taking home second place in the MIAA state meet on October twelfth. The cheer team competed at the CAC League competition at Essex Tech on October thirtieth, placing third. They also competed at the state vocational competition on November sixth at Blackstone Valley Tech and qualified for the D-one North Regional on November thirteenth at Lowell High School. And for varsity football, they have battled all season with a very young team. They captured wins over Chelsea High on October twenty-first, as well as Minutemen on October twenty-second. They also played well in close losses to Greater Lawrence and Mystic Valley. They will look to finish strong heading towards the annual Thanksgiving clash with Shoshine.
Thank you, Mr. Bladus.
Thank you. Thank you, Anthony. You're welcome.
Okay, uh, now I'd like to entertain approval of the minutes from the October twentieth meeting. By Mr. Tatsias, second by Mr. Morin.
Mr. O'Hair.
Approval of the minutes.
Yes.
Mr. Espinola.
Yes.
Mr. Bahu.
Yes.
Mr. Lemay. Mr. Morin.
Yes.
Mr. Tatsias.
Yes.
Mr. Gigi.
Yes.
Mr. Booten.
Yes. Next up, we have, uh, report of the treasurer, approval of the warrants. Entertain a motion to...
So move.
Leave the reading, thank you.
Leave the reading.
I got caught there, thank you, Mr. Morin, for helping. By Mr. Morin, second by Mr. Bahu.
Mr. O'Hair.
Yes.
Mr. Espinola.
Yes.
Mr. Bahu.
Yes.
Mr. Lemay. Mr. Morin.
Yes.
Mr. Tatsias.
Yes.
Mr. Gigi.
Yes.
Mr. Booten.
Yes. Now I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the expenditures for the sum of three million one hundred sixty-five thousand seventy-five dollars and twenty-five cents by Mr. Espinola, seconded by Mr. Tatsias.
Mr. O'Hair.
Yes.
Mr. Espinola.
Yes.
Mr. Bahu.
Yes.
Mr. Lemay. Mr. Morin.
Yes.
Mr. Tatsias.
Yes.
Mr. Gigi.
Yes.
Mr. Booten.
Yes. Okay, there's no report of the general counsel. Uh, next we'll have the report of the superintendent director, Mr. Bujoir, turn the meeting over to you.
Thank you very much. The first item I have on, on my, uh, report, uh, if you remember, last month, I did a presentation on some of the success indicators that we're looking at, uh, for our school and for our students. And, uh, about three or four of those slides were about the success that we're experiencing in Skills USA. We've got twice as many participants last year than we had three years ago. We're winning, um, or we're competing in many more events, and we're being successful both on the, um, district, the state, and we even had two kids compete in nationals last year, so the improvement has been incredible, and I've invited our Skills USA officer team along with, um, two of their advisors, uh, Tom Kazlowski and Sharon Cornelia, to, uh, just share a little bit about, about, uh, what they're planning for this year. So come on up. Welcome.
Good evening. Thank you so much for having us tonight. My name is Sharon Cornelia. I teach English language art, language arts, and I have the privilege of working with the officers and our Skills USA students here, along with Mr. Kazal- Kazlowski, Tom Kazlowski from Metal Fab, and we're also working with Mr. Gagian Gemmi from CAD, who is teaching night school in the building tonight, and Mr. Paul Pesci, our new programming and web design instructor, who's brought some exciting new resources to us as well. So the kids are wearing their unofficial Skills USA dress tonight because they wanted to show you what they are wearing almost every day when they're around the building to keep skills alive and well, when they, you know, in between events, when maybe it could fall to the back of our memories. So the kids are really seeing it in our building, and it's really coming alive in a real way for them, and we're really excited about what's going on. So, two weeks ago, the officers had their installation ceremony when you were at your retreat, and they'd like to present a little bit of that to you tonight. Lindsay?
Good evening. We would like to begin by introducing our two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen Greater Lowell Skills USA Executive Council. My name is Lindsay Stassi. I am a senior in the plumbing program, and I am serving as chapter president this year.
My name is Kenny De La Cruz, and I'm a junior in the carbon sheet program. This year, I will be serving as chapter vice president.
My name is Mackenzie Gomes, and I am a senior in the design and visual communications program. This year, I will be serving as your chapter secretary.
My name is Evan Bladus, and I am a sophomore in the elec- in electronics. This year, I will be serving as chapter treasurer.
My name is Zachary Gardett, and I am a sen- senior in computer aided drafting and design. I am serving as your chapter reporter this year.
My name is Nicole Helms. I am a junior in the design and visual communications program. This year, I will be serving as your chapter historian.
My name is Kylie Lambert, and I am a senior in early childhood education, and this year I'll be serving as chapter ambassador.
And my name is Daniel Cornelia. I'm a senior in design and visual communications. This year, I will be serving as your Massachusetts Skills USA State Treasurer. As a veteran of the chapter executive council, I can tell you that being a Skills USA officer is not an easy job. Each of us undertakes a great deal of responsibility within our office. In addition to the specific duties for which we were elected, we are required to maintain our grades and attendance, and at all times demonstrate the poise and demeanor that is valued in Skills USA professionals. Furthermore, while fulfilling our individual roles, we must also learn to come together as a team in order to move the organization forward. Even though the commitment is great, I can personally attest to the benefits of membership and involvement. As an officer, there are endless opportunities for personal and professional development that will assist each of us in preparing to be leaders in the future. Serving on the state executive council has magnified this experience to an immeasurable degree. As your Massachusetts Skills USA State Treasurer, it is my privilege to serve as an ambassador for career technical education, representing both Greater Lowell Tech and the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. My role as a state officer has taken me on some amazing adventures, beginning with a week of intensive in-state officer training, and continuing with a week at the Washington Leadership Training Institute. There, I received my statesman award, toured our nation's capital, paid my respects at Arlington National Cemetery, and toured the Pentagon with a former Skills USA member and Navy captain. This opportunity also came with responsibility. Prior to traveling, I was tasked with presenting a comprehensive and well-researched paper that outlined the history and importance of the Carl D. Perkins Act, and another that traced the emergence of the skills gap and how Skills USA is working to resolve it. In my eyes, nothing could top that learning experience. However, just two weeks later, I was traveling again, this time to the World Skills International General Assembly in Ontario, Canada. As one of only five individuals representing the United States, I was amazed to see delegates from almost every nation come together to plan an international event devoted to the success and celebration of career and technical education. Meeting educational leaders from Australia, China, Finland, and Norway, just to name a few, was as impressive as seeing Niagara Falls and traveling up the falls at sunset in a tram. This was an awe-inspiring week, and one that I will never forget. Since then, I have had several other opportunities for growth and leadership, but it all adds up to one thing. I am now more prepared than ever before to meet the challenges and obstacles I will face in this ever-changing, ever-growing society. In closing, I'd like to thank our school committee, administration, staff, and advisors for allowing me to participate in these amazing opportunities, and for supporting all of our students as they begin to take these first steps in their path to future success. Thank you. For those of you new to Skills USA, we'd like to take a moment to give you a little background about the organization and our chapter, so that you can further understand why the officers have become a part of this and how they can benefit from their involvement. Skills USA is a national organization serving over three hundred thousand members annually. Since nineteen sixty-five, Skills USA, formerly known as VICA, has served more than eleven million members. Our National Leadership and Skills Conference is a thirty million dollar event where over four million dollars is distributed annually and directly to students in the form of scholarships, tools, awards, and prizes. Here in Massachusetts, we have over thirty-three thousand members in fifty-one chapters. The largest membership in the country. At our state conference, over two million dollars in prizes, scholarships, tools, and awards is distributed annually to student competitors. As a total participation school, every Greater Lowell student and instructor has the opportunity to benefit from Skills USA programs, training, and events. When this is combined with the Skills USA frameworks, it is clear to see how this organization prepares students for leader- for leadership in the world of work and beyond.
Our Skills USA frameworks and goals are based on activities that represent an applied method of instruction for preparing America's high-performance workers. It provides quality educational experiences in leadership, teamwork, citizenship, and character development. The Skills USA frameworks emphasize total quality at work, high ethical standards, superior work skills, lifelong education, and pride and dignity of work. Our frameworks provide a common language for students to articulate what they gain from Skills USA participation to employers, school administrators, parents, and other students. When this is combined with a network of millions of alumni, hundreds of business and industry partners, and countless opportunities for growth, Skills USA becomes the premier model for guaranteeing individual professional success for each of its members.
No organization can succeed without a great deal of careful planning, and Skills USA is no exception. The heart of Skills USA is the program of work or the projects and, and activities that a chapter will carry out during the school year. Our program of work, our program of work each year includes community service, leadership development, fundraising, public relations, competition, and hours of preparation in addition to the specific job of our offices. This August, our newly-elected chapter executive council came together to begin bonding as a team while we planned our program of activities for the year. Our goal was not to just involve more members, but to involve those members more. As a result, our calendar of events represents the many ways students and staff can become involved in Skills USA. In addition to competition preparation, we've added several new initiatives to involve students more fully in the Skills USA experience. Students interested in leadership development and professional growth can attend bimonthly professional development program workshops. Those interested in community service and learning more about the way our chapter is run can take part in the Student Advisory Council, which will we- which will meet monthly. We are even changing the way we conduct our fundraising and social events so that all students feel comfortable and included. It is our goal for Skills USA to be a home away from home for all students, not just some. We even have new resources for teachers. Our quarterly instructor forums, led by our advisors, will allow teachers the opportunity to ask questions, learn from each other, and hear about best practices. There are also new resources and teaching tools being developed and distributed each month.
When speaking with members about what they would like to see in skills this year, we heard a lot of requests to increase communication. As a result of this feedback, our greatest improvement this year was the launching of our own website. Geotechskills.com is designed to be a resource for any teacher, student, or parent who wants to learn more about Skills USA and how to get involved. Currently, the site is linked to the student activity section of the student intranet and appears as a link on the school app. It also appears as a link on the s- for teachers on their page of the intranet. Even though we are still fine-tuning the site, it is our hope that this resource will provide answers to questions, keep every student and teacher informed, and involve parents in their students' Skills USA experience in a much more meaningful way. As chapter officers, one of our first official duties will be to attend a three-day event, the Massachusetts Skills USA Fall Leadership Conference for Workplace Readiness. At this event, approximately one thousand chapter officers and student members from high schools all over Massachusetts will follow an exhausting conference schedule and learn firsthand about teamwork, professionalism, and personal standards of excellence. Our primary goal while at the conference will be to earn our Skills USA Leader Awards, an honor given to those participants who demonstrate the mastery of Skills USA goals, purposes, and a mission, a knowledge of organizational structure, and an understanding of parliamentary procedure. We will also participate in professional development workshops, community service activities, and team events designed to reinforce the objectives of Skills USA.
Last year, I had the opportunity to attend the Fall Conference and observe firsthand what it is like when this many students and their teachers come together to develop their leadership, communication, and social skills. This was an awesome experience and one that is hard to describe. Everyone there is focused on becoming a better leader and learning how to serve their chapters and their members better. Having so many like-minded individuals in one place is incredible. Each day's events begin at six-thirty a.m. and went straight through until midnight, when we would collapse into our beds and get ready to start all over again. We bonded with our officer team, with officers from other schools, and we learned that no matter what, we had to find a way to get the job done, and we did. Despite our exhaustion, we powered through and came home with our, all our team members receiving their Skills USA State Leader Awards, two proactive awards for outstanding achievement, and two OSHA safety awards. This year, our team has made it our personal goal to leave the Fall Conference with each person having received their Skills USA State Leader Award, and with our team achieving at least two individual awards of excellence, and an additional two awards for outstanding achievement and performance of our team events. While this is a huge goal to undertake, we are certain that we are up for the challenge, and we know that you will wish us luck.
Before closing, I would like to express how honored I am to be standing here before you as the two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen Greater Lowell Skills USA Chapter President. Last year, as chapter ambassador, I was privileged to work with a dedicated group of individuals, and by learning and growing together, we created a lifetime of memories, as well as some tangible successes worthy of celebration. In addition to increased medal counts in all levels of competition, for the first time in the history of the school, and only the third time in the history of Massachusetts Skills USA, Greater Lowell was honored by the National Association as a regional gold level chapter of distinction. This highest level of the chapter excellence program honors chapter achievement relative to the framework of developing personal, workplace, and technical skills. While some chapters may be happy with that honor, and we are, it is our goal this year to surpass it and claim the award for all regions, and I know this officer team can do it. Each member of this executive council has worked hard to become an officer, and more importantly, is truly devoted to both Skills USA and developing as a team. Together, we present an unprecedented level of commitment, integrity, determination, and pride, which all but guarantees that we can lead our chapter to even greater levels of success. In closing, on behalf of our officer team and advisors, we'd like to thank the school committee and administration for all of your support and encouragement. We will do our best to make you proud. Thank you.
Keep up the good work. You guys are awesome. Nice job, Kenny.
Thank you so much.
How's that house coming? You guys are working on...
Awesome.
Coming good? You good? Good. Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Keep up the good work. You guys are doing an awesome job. Keep up the good work. Nice job. Want you good. There's your brother.
Very nice presentation. Good. Good job. Good job. You glad that over, huh? It wasn't that bad. Yeah, it wasn't good. It was great. Good job. Congratulations. It was awesome. Good job, man. Thank you so much. Good job. Good job. Yes. You guys did a great job. Something that can be done.
I'm a plumber. Thank you.
That's amazing.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. Thanks. See you later.
I'll push him over towards you. He's coughing.
There was a grill a few years ago. She was the number one plumber.
You okay, Roger? Nothing's wrong?
My niece graduated from here masonry. My niece graduated here from masonry.
Yes, I know. Just popped up.
What's that?
It's awesome.
Yeah.
So, the second item on my report is my, my monthly cooperative education report. Very similar to last year, we're still at, we're at thirty-six percent of our senior class at this point in time. It's exactly where we were at this point in time last year, so we're, we're holding our own and, um, you know, looking, always looking to improve. That's my report. Thank you. Thank you very much. Oh, one other thing, I think you, you may have received invitations. Uh, we're gonna be dedicating the, um, basketball court to, uh, Joe Kane on December ninth. That's their first, I believe it's the first game of the year, so... Okay, so, they, they just went out, so I just want to give you a heads up. So it'll be at halftime, it's a seven o'clock game, the girls are playing first, and then the boys, and the dedication will take place at halftime, uh, which would be around seven forty-five. You've got invitations coming out, there'll be a reception downstairs, um, five-thirty to six-thirty before the game, so, um, so mark your calendars for December ninth if you're available, be here for that. Thank you. Okay, thank you very much. Next we have the, uh, I can believe the school business manager. Ms. Turner. Hi.
So, um, there are five items that I would like to share with you. One is that we're starting the FY eighteen budget process. Um, all of the cluster chairs are currently reviewing their FY seventeen budgets to, um, identify their fiscal needs for next year. Their due date for that is November eighteenth. At that point, Roger and I will begin meeting with each of the department heads to discuss their priorities. The next thing is we need to vote on three items that we need to dispose of. Um, one is the boxes of damaged and outdated library books. No value. I don't know if we do this individually or... Okay. So can we vote on the boxes of damaged outdated library books?
Okay, entertain a motion to, to the library books, by Mr. Tatsias, seconded by Mr. Bahu.
Mr. O'Hair.
Yes.
Mr. Espinola.
Yes.
Mr. Bahu.
Yes.
Mr. Lemay. Mr. Morin.
Yes.
Mr. Tatsias.
Yes.
Mr. Gigi.
Yes.
Mr. Booten.
Yes.
The next item we need to vote to dispose of would be a workhorse green exposure unit with the graphics department.
Okay, entertain a motion, Mr. Bahu, seconded by Mr. O'Hair.
Mr. O'Hair.
Yes.
Mr. Espinola.
Yes.
Mr. Bahu.
Yes.
Mr. Lemay. Mr. Morin.
Yes.
Mr. Tatsias.
Yes.
Mr. Gigi.
Yes.
Mr. Booten.
Yes.
The third item is a patient stretcher, um, from the nursing program.
Okay, entertain a motion by Mr. O'Hair, seconded by Mr. Morin.
Mr. O'Hair.
Yes.
Mr. Espinola.
Yes.
Mr. Bahu.
Yes.
Mr. Lemay. Mr. Morin.
Yes.
Mr. Tatsias.
Yes.
Mr. Gigi.
Yes.
Mr. Booten.
Yes.
Yes.
So the next item is the audit, the FY '16 audit, we did begin this audit, the field work was started on November 7th. We have three different audits, the financial audit, the A133 program audit, and the end of the year report audit. And the next item is the end of the year financial report was completed and uploaded to the Department of Ed, and the final item is the transfers, we have a couple of transfers that need to be voted on.
Motion to accept the transfers of the sum of $20,115.95.
Okay, made by Mr. Bahu, seconded by Mr. Tatsias.
Mr. O'Hare.
Yes.
Mr. Espinola.
Yes.
Mr. Bahu.
Yes.
Mr. Lemay, Mr. Morin.
Yes.
Mr. Tatsias.
Yes.
Mr. Gigi.
Yes.
Mr. Booton.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Turner. Any old business, anybody have any, want to speak about any of the old business? Okay, we'll move on to any new business?
Let me just, this falls under new business, I think, but I just was talking to some people recently, and it's something that come up in reference to this school, and I really was caught short, I didn't know anything about it. And this is, are we in the process of trying to work in agreement through a grant with Lowell High School to have some of the students at Lowell High School come to this school for some of the craft? And is that in the?
You was brought up at the last meeting?
We, there was a grant that was available, it was actually for, we ended up spending no money out of it, but it was a partnership grant to look at and to meet with schools that may have kids on a waitlist here, to see whether or not there might be some innovative ideas that we may be able to come up with to maybe assist with those kids coming off those waitlists. It was just an exploratory grant to just meet and have a discussion, which has been taking place over the last couple of months.
Well, this was a little different than that, not only kids, kids that are on a waitlist, the students that go to Grade Lowell, we're not making an assumption on that, but this was for students at Lowell High School who would do better if they were in a vocational technical school environment, buses would be hired by the city of Lowell to send the students out here and then back into Lowell at the end of the day to do their academics. Is that something that, excuse me, is that something that is fruition, or is that just some incidental?
What you're describing is some of the discussions that were taking place over the brainstorming of that grant opportunity. It was a grant to be able to have a discussion to see if there might be ways to work together to assist kids that are on our waitlist.
Okay, I was taken by surprise because I had no knowledge of this whatsoever, and I'm saying, geez, first I've heard of it, but, you know, I would hope in the future you'd let us know what is taking place, or that if anybody has some questions, that we should acknowledge that we had some knowledge of this taking place.
I think I was, well, we write a lot of grants, we got a grant coming up for opioids, we got, we had a lot of grants, I can more than happy to keep you appraised of all the ones we put in for it. I was waiting to see whether or not there was anything that came to fruition from this grant. It was for a short period of time, it was to have a discussion and to see whether anything would come out of it, and then there's subsequent grants that you could look for for funding. But I will, whoever.
Yeah, I would just.
I don't know at what level to keep you informed.
Yeah, I didn't know, but I would think.
There's a half a dozen grants that we're working on right now.
I understand, Mr. Superintendent, but it would be nice if we kind of had an idea of what was maybe going to take place because of grants, or any other thing, because there's no such thing as a secret in this city, all right? And everybody's coming and asking me questions, and I'm saying, boy, first I've heard of it.
Never intended to be a secret.
All right, but if we get some information.
We had, I think, three meetings to have a discussion about whether or not we might be able to brainstorm innovative ways to maybe try and assist kids, and that's about all there is to say about it.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Can I ask on that, then, was there any type of feeling that this could work out in after-school program with the member communities?
It does, it does, at this point in time, and that was the purpose of the grant, was to really take a look at it, to see whether or not you could do a program, but there's quite a few primarily funding obstacles that would be very, very difficult to overcome. So it doesn't really appear at this point in time unless there was additional funding coming from the state, which was, you know, part of the purpose of the grant was to identify what the obstacles might be so that maybe they could be overcome in the future.
Do you provide that information that you got back to whoever was offering the grant? Is there, is anybody collecting that data?
There's a narrative from the grants, it's going to be two or three pages, it's going to go back to the state. This was generated from basically the governor's office, looking at getting grant funding to look at innovative ways to get kids statewide off the waitlists, right? So some schools have some pretty significant waitlists, we have a fairly short one, but some schools have some pretty significant ones. So there were 12 schools that were selected in round one to participate, we were one of 12 that were selected, and we've been working with some folks over at Lowell Public Schools because that's where the kids are all from, on the waitlist are from Lowell. But at this point in time, we're not quite done with the grant, and the discussions, but it looks like we kind of identified some issues that were positive that we could do, and then there were some funding issues that just were kind of insurmountable to be able to make it work. So hopefully, the state can take that back and take that information, and, you know, maybe they can then figure out some ways to overcome some of the issues.
If you could, if it'd be okay to get that report in our next, if it is available in our meeting packet or sent to us, just so we have an idea of what the funding issue is, so we know.
Sure, well, once it's completed, it's not completed at this time.
Sure.
As soon as it's completed, I'll email it out to all of you.
Excellent. Mr. O'Hare, you had?
Yeah, I just wanted to point out that, and I think we all have different ideas of what may have, you know, what the end result was, but this wasn't an afternoon program that people were telling me. This was going to be a program that would take place during the school day, that students from the other school, more than likely Lowell High School, would be transferred, bussed out to here to take part in the technical classes, and after whatever the timeframe was, then they would be bused back to their home school.
So the model that we looked at, and I was at the meetings, I don't know who was telling.
Well, I didn't know what was right or wrong.
No, what I can tell you is the model that was discussed. The model that was discussed was an after-school model, where the kids would go to Lowell High School, they would receive their four periods of core academics, right? So they'd go in later, they wouldn't start early in the morning, they'd go for their four periods of core academics, and then one of our buses on the way to pick up our kids here at 2:00 would swing by and they would pick up the kids at Lowell High.
Yep.
They would then bring them here, drop them off, and then pick up our kids to take them home, and then we were talking about a pilot of two programs. So those two programs would then run from 2:15 to 5:00, and then the kids would get on the sports buses to be able to go home.
Yep.
So that was the model that we were looking at.
I think information like that would have been helpful because, you know, there was other things that were mentioned, I had no idea, I didn't know whether it was true or untrue, but I'm just, obviously, there is some, on this particular thing, there's some action taking place, or hopefully going to take place, and if we would just kind of tip off the school committee also, that if anybody asked us the questions, we can follow up rather than just sit there and say, I have no idea what's going on.
So, so there's nothing coming out of the grant because it's not feasible to move forward, and I guess what I was waiting for was, if I was going to give you information, I guess I was waiting to make sure that it was, something was going to happen with it, and we're almost there. It's being written up now, and be more than happy to try and let, you know, keep you more in the loop moving forward.
Thank you.
Mr. Bahu.
Just to add my two cents, this has been an ongoing issue across the state for many years. Thank heavens our governor has finally began to define it and try to move forward on it, and, you know, I'm grateful that you were able to have these meetings and share with us, and I'll thank you, Mr. O'Hare, for coming up with that conversation. I think what I'm hearing about the general model thought is where there might be some costs and such would be the after-school program from 2:15 to roughly 5:00 p.m., retaining teachers and sharp instructors and such like that, is that, was that where the funding issue would become a problem?
Not so much that piece of it. I think it's more with, so there's extra money that follows kids that go into vocational education, so there'd be extra money available, but the level of support that kids might need because of either English language learner issues or special education issues was where there wasn't funding to support that, the needs of the kids. So we, the model did have enough money to be sustainable with regard to just delivering the vocational education period, what it didn't have was the money to pick up any supplemental services the kids would need. So that's really what the flaw in it was. Hopefully, the Department of Education, when they get the grant write-up back, if they're interested in making a model like this work, they'd have to find a way to fund that piece. One of the nice things that came out of our conversations with the folks at Lowell was that we enjoyed trying to figure this out together, so we're building a relationship, we've both told each other that if there's anything else that we can work together to help kids in the future, that, you know, we'd like to continue the discussion. Another grant just came out, I'll give you a heads up on it right now, I don't know if we're going to be writing it, but there's another grant that just came out with adult basic education. So adult basic education in the state, students who do not have high school diplomas, and they want to go to night school for that, and Lowell has an adult basic education program, but it's never contained a vocational component, so there's a grant that just came out where adult basic education units can partner with a vocational school to not only provide English and math and science, but also to give some vocational training that would maybe help them get employment as they get their high school equivalency.
Which would be a night program, is that correct?
So that would be part of night school, yeah, that would be a night program. So we're looking at applying for that grant, it just came out like two days ago, so we're looking, I mean, every grant that comes out, we take a peek at and take, you know, if it looks like it's something that would help the students that live in this district, we take a shot at it, that's what we did with the, was basically an exploratory grant, the partnership grant, just to explore whether or not there might be a model or an idea out there that we might be able to get kids off a waitlist, that just unfortunately didn't work out, but it was worth the effort to try and see if there was a way. And we learnt more about what the issues would be to try and do something like that, which was a good thing.
And that's all great information, thank you for sharing that.
No, you're welcome.
Bringing it up under new business, Mr. O'Hare.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Tatsias, you have a question?
I'm trying to figure out how this might work, had we pursued it further, the kids would do their academics at Lowell High or one or the other, and then come here at night?
They'd come here in the afternoon.
Oh, during the school day?
Yeah, so basically, they would go into school, instead of going into school at 7:30.
Yeah.
They would go into school at 9:30, 10:00, right? And then they'd take four periods of their core subjects, and then at the end of the four periods of their core subjects, one of our buses that was coming here to pick up our kids would just swing by and pick them up and bring them here, and then they would start at 2:15. Our kids would leave at 2:00, their class would, they would then get sharp from 2:15, so it'd be a half-day sharp program, be a half-day academic, half-day sharp program every day. That's how the, that's what the model would work. And that model's not, I mean, that model was used years ago.
They would be coming after the our regular day ends?
Right.
So the sharp teachers would either have to stay later, or would have to hire more sharp teachers?
So it's, so the model's contingent on several things, right? So one of the things it's contingent on is kids wanting to be in the program. Another thing it's contingent on is us being able to find teachers that want to work that second shift, so to speak, right? They just taught all day. But it doesn't have to be the same teacher, it could be a program with four teachers, they could, you know, they could each do a day a week type of thing, and then somebody rotate on Fridays, maybe. So you have to be able to staff it, so we knew going in that it's contingent on certain things. The other thing it's contingent on is adequate, that the funding available is going to be adequate to meet the needs of the kids. That's where the model fell apart.
Sounds like there's an awful lot of ifs.
Yeah, I think, I think that there probably were, you know, out of, I think there were kids that would have liked to have participated in a program. And I think that we have programs where we have an interest that teachers would teach it as well. Not every program, but I think we have some programs that there might be an interest. But I think it's, it was the funding piece that wasn't quite.
I can imagine it would be, yeah.
And we were just looking to try it with a cohort of two shops, and it was only going to be 16 kids, eight kids in each shop, right? So we were looking at just trying a cohort, if we were able to go forward, it was just going to be a pilot cohort to then test the model, right? Unfortunately, we couldn't get by the finances to be able to get to testing out the model. But the idea was just, you know, and that was the nice thing about working with Lowell is that, I mean, we both approached this, that it might be an opportunity to help kids, and if it works out, then it's great, and if it doesn't work out, at least we tried to figure it out, and maybe next time we'll be able to figure out the other piece.
I think it's a great idea to expose more kids to vocational training. How to do it is the big.
I mean, ideally, we would want to have no waitlist, so we have 160 seats a year, if we had 560, if we had 560 students, everybody that wants to be here is here. Unfortunately, we've got another 80 kids that wanted to come that we didn't have room for, not because we don't want them to be here, we just don't have room. And it was really to try and help some of those kids that didn't get the opportunity to come here, and we approached it, Lowell was fantastic to work with. And like I said, I think one of the good things that did come out of it was that, you know, we strengthened on our relationship, and if there's other ways that we can work together, we'd be happy to do that.
Good, very good, thank you. Any other new business? Okay, we'll move on to committee person motions. Motion.
Motion by Mr. Booton and Mr. O'Hare to have the superintendent review our current sports program to see if additional teams are needed and make recommendations for upcoming budget season.
I don't know. You second?
Second.
If I could.
Mr. Booton.
I was approached by a parent of a softball player, and then the coach of the softball team, Coach Jones, filled me in with some more information. We're cutting quite a few individuals on our softball team, and the parent and Coach Jones asked about putting in possibly either a freshman team or a second varsity team. Many schools are going to a JVB team to allow more players to play, and the superintendent and the staff here has done such a great job increasing our sports program over the last three years. Once I started asking questions, there's other teams that would like to expand and like to increase, not just for softball, so it started off as a softball question, then other teams are saying that they may be able to fill more than one team, more than one JV team or a freshman team. Obviously, that would be up to the superintendent and our athletic director, but I was told of the story of a young lady who had never played softball before, and she came to the captain's practices, and she ended up making the team because she just had the raw skill and the determination, and I think if we had a freshman team or another JVB team or however they wanted to do it, we would be able to get more students playing, and I think it would be great to look at this now, get a report for the next meeting where we're coming up on budget season, to see if we need any additional coaches or any other resources, and if we can afford it. Thank you.
Mr. O'Hare.
Just to add on to what Mr. Booton just said, I think volleyball is looking for the same treatment, and basically, it gives the school, and incidentally, other schools are doing this already, but it gives the school the opportunity to bring kids along even before they, some kids never played ball before they got into their varsity. before they got into their varsity level. But now, now kids that are, the students that are in these sports, they may, depending on how they're doing on a certain week or whatever, the coach could move them up into a, into a varsity level so that they could play a game, all right? And the same thing with volleyball. How, in addition, many of those ki, you're bringing, you're training the kids a little earlier than you normally would for a varsity sport, and it's, it's an acceptable practice, there's no vi, there are, you can violate rules, but the, the way it's set up is you won't have to violate rules, and because of the, you're limited to, if you want your lower team player to move up to the varsity level, they can only play so many, you know, they can only play once a day. They couldn't play JV and varsity the same day. So, really, it's a, it's a, in addition to having more kids in the sports, it is getting them ready for, you know, ultimately in, in high school ball, it's getting ready them for the varsity. An acceptable program in many of the other schools, and it, it sounds like a, a great opportunity for, for this. Talking to somebody else, whoever that may be, the A.D. or whoever, I think that's a great idea because there could be some expense, some minimal expense. When I was playing JV's at Keith Academy, we wore the, we wore the varsity uniforms that the varsity had two years before, you know? But I don't think that, there is an expense, but I don't think the expense is that great.
Mr. Bahu, move to adjourn.
Well, I think that's a great idea, I'm gonna just ask a couple of questions. Firstly, I've spoken to some coaches before, and they've shared with me that we have an awful lot of students going out for sports, athletics, whether it's the fall season, the spring season, or the winter season, and unfortunately, not all the kids can make it. And you would wish all the students that really have the heart to make it could. I, I, I think, you know, one of the questions I have would be, do, would we have enough students to field, per se, a softball team, an extra JV softball team, or an extra soccer team, or an extra, the ba, you know, I wanna say baseball team, but we already have a, a JV baseball team. But, you know, any one of those teams. So, firstly, would we have enough students to go ahead and form that? Secondly, would we have enough coaches that want to go ahead and coach? You know, I think you realistically need as many as two coaches per team, if not more. So, could we find the coaches? And thirdly, is there enough space within our facility to satisfy all the students? I'm a big fan of making this work, I think extracurricular activities benefit students, benefit families, benefit sports, and it moves them, it progresses them to be a, a much better person moving forward. But there are some questions to be answered. So, I wanna go ahead and say, I would back this motion, but I think it's gonna take a little work, and then come back with maybe a report next, next week, or next, next meeting, I should say, and see if we can satisfy some of those questions.
Any other questions?
I.
Yeah, go ahead.
I, I just wanna say that's a great idea, and I think that would be done. And there are some of the schools now that are actually doing it, so as far as facilities, you, you know, it could be a home-away situation, and those, those teams could make. Now, because of the season, Mr. Superintendent, I thought we'd bring this in because we want our teams to be beating Shawshank in all the games in the future.
Other schools, other schools.
Shawshank watches our meetings.
Take, I thought we were gonna get through a whole meeting without the word Shawshank. Anyway, sorry to interrupt.
Mr. O'Hare?
Yes.
Mr. Espinola?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. Lemay, Mr. Moran?
Yes.
Mr. Tatsias?
Yes.
Mr. Gigi?
Yes.
Mr. Booton?
Yes. Okay, we'll move on to the report of the subcommittees. Approval of the October eighteenth, two thousand and sixteen Superintendent Evaluation Subcommittee. A motion by Mr. Bahu, seconded by Mr. Moran.
Mr. O'Hare?
Yes.
Mr. Espinola?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. Lemay? Mr. Moran?
Yes.
Mr. Tatsias? Mr. Gigi?
Yes.
Mr. Booton?
Yes. Entertain a motion to approval of the October twentieth, Grade Lowell Technical High School Building Committee Report by Mr. O'Hare, seconded by Mr. Bahu.
Mr. O'Hare?
Yes.
Mr. Espinola?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. Lemay? Mr. Moran?
Yes.
Mr. Tatsias?
Yes.
Mr. Gigi?
Yes.
Mr. Booton?
Yes. I don't believe there was any subcommittee, I mean, any monthly approvals.
No. Motion to adjourn, Mr. Booton?
Mr. Bahu, motion to adjourn, seconded by Mr. Gigi.
Mr. O'Hare?
Yes.
Mr. Espinola?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. Lemay? Mr. Moran?
Yes.
Mr. Tatsias?
Yes.
Mr. Gigi?
Yes.
Mr. Booton?
Yes.